The regular business meeting of the Board of Education is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Nancy, would you like to lead us in the question?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the good health of our citizens, our nation, and to the peaceful and healthy lives of all
Denise, please call the roll.
Steve and Erica.
Here.
Alex Delricoli.
Here.
Pat Grudy. Karen Monstard here. Ellen Howard here. Amanda Overly here. Judy Sugarman.
Here. For the record, Pat Grudy is not with us this evening. This evening, we will be having a report, an educational presentation on the 2009 student achievement results. There will be several reports from the student board members. The superintendent, of course, will have a report as well, after which we will then have an opportunity for any members of the public to address the board. After that, we go into the consent vote agenda where you have lumped together the routine items of the board, such as bills payable, employment of employees, et cetera, and then we have various committees that make their report. And so, I would like to begin with...oh, and also note that the executive session referred to at the end of your agenda will be canceled and we will not be meeting the executive session. This evening, we have an educational presentation from Deb Larson, our Assistant Superintendent on Student Achievement.
Good evening. Good evening. In your packets this evening, you should have a copy of a press release which Mary Todrick and I worked on last week to share with our local newspapers about some of our student performance data. Also, you have copies of our AYP reports, which are required by the state, were required to share with you, and also the class of 2009, the graduating seniors, their final ACT scores for each of the individual schools and for the district. In addition, tonight, I will summarize our ACT scores, our AYP progress, and our AP scores. Every time this year, we start to get a lot of our student performance data, and probably in the next week or so, I'll have a final district data sheet that I'll be sharing with you and also posting on our website to share with our community about how we're doing. The news this evening is very good. I'm very proud to say that...we'll start with our ACT scores first, and this short little PowerPoint I have for you will show you what our composite scores are. Once again, we have continued to improve. Our district average composite ACT score is 24.8. That's up .2 from last year. Over the past seven years, we have increased .7 in that average composite ACT score. So, each year, we may go up a little, down a little, up a little, but over seven years, we've been up .7. Remarkable. Very significant this year was Vernon Hills. Last year, their average composite ACT score was 24.0, and they were 24.7 this year. So, that's a huge, significant increase, a .7 increase. And Libertyville was...is 24.9 this year as well. Last year, they were 25.0. So, a slight decline, but probably not significant at all. And we're comparing, remember, two different classes of students. You'll see the number of students that took the test at each school. You'll also see that the composite scores in a lot of the subtests, the math, the English, the reading, and the science, are all starting to climb as well. They're all starting to approach that 25 limit. So, something to be very, very proud when the national average is 21.1, and so, we're doing well above average nationally with our average ACT scores. Very good performance as far as that class of 2009. Any questions on the ACT? Ellen.
Do you attribute any of this to the work keys that you portioned that you were looking through 15 years ago?
You know, I attribute it to a lot of things that we're doing. A lot of our teachers are trying to incorporate these types of test questions in their curriculum and in their assessments in their classroom. We have been using work keys with our incoming freshmen in our skills program, but also in some of our other curricular areas to target some of the students that need more practice at those types of questions. We have also refined some of our classes and had co-teaching. We've targeted some students with co-teaching strategies, and that's, I think, giving some students support. We also have increased, almost double-fold, our participation in the ACT prep program in the evening by targeting students on their planned tests in their sophomore year, talking with them again in the fall, and saying, you know, "You really need to do some more preparation." And then, through grants, supporting students to take that evening course as far as test prep. In addition, this will be the third year we've given every junior a practice at the test in the fall. And I think, you know, when you go into that testing situation and you've already been there once before, you kind of relieve some of that anxiety of the test-taking, and they become more familiar with the types of questions that are being asked. So, I think we're making a lot of efforts in a lot of different areas, curricular, extracurricular ways, to help our students do better. And I can't even talk about the incoming freshman academy yet, because we've only done that for two years. Next year, they'll be juniors. That's what I'm really looking forward to seeing, how some of those students who we've gotten off to a little better start in high school will do. Karen.
Does the scores taken...many of the students take the ACT more than once. Do you take the highest score that they've seen?
This is their final, and it's the highest. Right. It's the final report on that exiting class of 2009.
That's the only score.
Right.
So, you give one score.
That would be our average score.
I think it's also worth noting that the national average of 21.1, really one of a few handfuls states where every student takes the ACT.
Right.
And so, our average being that high, every student takes it, isn't a problem.
Yeah, there's only three states in the U.S. that take the ACT, where the entire state takes the ACT as part of their assessment, and we're one of them. So, I think that's really remarkable.
Could you be even more particular? Is the highest in the score for each area also the one that's taken, even if it's not all from...
Their best performance.
So, whatever the highest scores are, even in the subcategories from each test?
Should be their best performance. So, they're really improving, and I think in two or three years, I think we can see all of those being above 25 and really have had a significant growth over the past seven or eight years. A really remarkable performance, really great. If we could go on to the next slide, please. AYP again means annual yearly progress. This is measured each year by the state test, which, for us, it's the PSAE. That test is taken in April by all juniors. It's a two-day test. The first day is the ACT, so a lot of our juniors get their first attempt to take the ACT then. They can repeat it. Some of them do, some of them don't. Others have already taken it, perhaps, on another national test date. So, that's their real attempt to take that ACT. And then, the second day is the PSAE portion, where they have a math, a reading, and a science test. And so, that...those two days, those scores are combined, and we're measured by the number of students that meet or exceed state standards in reading and mathematics. And the targets this year were 70 percent, and you can see our district and each of the schools met those targets. In reading, District 128, 80.4 percent of our students met or exceeded state standards in reading. In math, 83 percent, and in science, 79.3 percent. And this also shows a slight increase over last year. So, I think we're continuing to stress the importance with students about this particular test, and most of our students are doing very well. Most schools have made AYP. The district made AYP, and even with our subgroups, our special ed and some of our other subgroups, last year, those groups improved enough to where they met safe harbor, and so, we made AYP. Alex.
Can...can one make it without the other? Are they additive, and the district could not make it even though the other two schools made it? Is there a separate criteria for all three of those?
Each school is handled differently, and if one school doesn't make it, then usually the district doesn't make it. And the district is measured by subgroups. So, in other words, if the district had 45 students, but each of the schools didn't, the district would be measured on how those 45 students did. So, they're each separate, and all three of them made it.
So, two schools could make it, but if they could not make it, is it possible?
That is possible.
It is possible.
Yeah, I think the other thing that's important here, going back to what Al said in his comments before, is the PSAE test is based on college readiness standards, and it's developed in partnership with the core curriculum from ACT. So, it's a very high-level test moving forward, and Deb, you may have mentioned this already, but it bears repeating, there are but a handful of high schools in the state that are currently making AYP, as that target continues to move out to 100 percent of students in 2014. So, again, kudos to the building principals and their instructional teams and certainly the teachers of the building for job well done.
Do we have any knowledge of what percentage of schools statewide have made AYP?
I have not seen that yet. Usually, my group CADCA begins to collect that and put that out, so...and not all the schools have started. As of this week, they're all getting up and starting. So, I assume in the next couple of weeks, someone will put out an email and start to compile that, and I'll have a better idea. I do know of, you know, some of the schools in our area that have not made it again. So, we did. Very...something to be very, very proud of, and I think our teachers are constantly aware of how we're doing and working hard to help our students be successful on that. So, that's our PSAE data, which includes the ACT and the PSAE. That's the class of the juniors last year, who are current seniors this year. So, again, we don't have their ACT performance data yet from this test, but it's always after they graduate that we get their final scores, and that's the one that we continue to mark progress on. And the third slide, if you want to take a look at that, our Advanced Placement Test results are in. We had 702 students take 1,472 tests, and of those tests, 90 percent of the students on those tests got a 3, 4, or a 5. And usually, this indicates that the student has successfully completed a college-level course, and in some cases, when they're off to college, they may get credit for it, depending on what the college or university grants, and that's individual, depends on the university and college. But a lot of our students do very well on this, and again, this participation has continued to grow, and our percentage has not faltered at all. We usually are around 89, 90 percent of our students doing 3, 4, or 5. So, that's just some of the data. We're still waiting for a few more things. We're collecting this week our six-day enrollment, so I'll have all of that in a chart that I'll be able to give to you soon, more complete district data analysis. But good news as we begin the school year.
Congratulations to the leadership team and their commitment to the strategic plan of the district, to the teachers and staff who have worked very hard to prepare students and to the students themselves who have performed marvelously. Congratulations.
Judy, before we move on, I think it's fair to say that we were doing the happy dance at district office. We got all this information within probably one week, and it is truly exciting news for the teachers and our students in the district. It's just...it's amazing stuff. And where we've aligned our message and our vision and our goals moving forward is to continue to work, of course, with all of our students that are doing very well now, to help them improve. But we are also targeting our percentage of kids that are not meeting or exceeding standards moving forward, and that's going to be very exciting for us as that continues to develop over the next couple of years, anchored in curriculum and instruction and assessment and feedback. So, that's going to be very exciting as we do that work moving forward. Ellen and Marina did a fabulous job on their opening days, and then Gavin, the district, in terms of following up on that. So, we're real excited, and we're holding ourselves accountable for continual improvement in the district and not being complacent with where we're at. We're doing great work. We can always do better, and we're all committed to that.
So, there's a trend that the bar is getting way ahead of a lot of schools, and is there going to be a "whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute" at some point here, because we're holding on, and eventually, let's assume we stop, we can't quite reach the mark, but that's going to be a lot of people waiting for us. What happens then? Can we talk about that?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Well, next year, the bar will be not 70 percent, but 77 percent. And so, you can see how probably in two years, when it's 84 or 85, we're not going to be there unless we continue to improve and get above that bar. You know, there has been talk that once a new administration got in in the fall, that no child left behind would be amended, bridged, updated, you know, to include perhaps some more realistic targets and a redefinition. You know, healthcare is on the front burner right now, and education is not. So, I think we're going to continue to work towards those goals, but I would say in a year or two, we're all going to be at a place where, you know, we aren't going to be above that bar, the target that was set. I also know that the...right now in Washington, they are working on a set of national curriculum standards. Forty-six governors have signed on, and so, I think there may be some discussion about we have to have the same set of standards, and we have to be assessing equally across the U.S. if we're going to be comparing, and, you know, maybe some discussion will come under that curriculum standards project that is being discussed right now too as well.
It's a model of a money-based assignment.
Yes.
In the current model that we have, if a district has a subgroup of students, which almost every district has, then it's just a matter of time before you're going to be non-AYP. Al mentioned earlier that we're one of three states, I believe, that's giving the ACT as part of their standardized state testing, but more importantly here, ACT is involved in the preparation of the PSAE test, so that test is also at a very high level. If you went next door to us, their state test is not at the level of an ACT test, and so, they may have initially more schools that are meeting their standards because their state has set that benchmark. Illinois has set a very high standard and very high cut scores as we move forward. So, if it doesn't change to what we call in the business a growth-based model, so we take Alex as a freshman, we find out where Alex is at, and then we're held accountable for making sure that Alex improves every year, not for a junior class comparing, you know, a junior class this year to a junior class from two years ago, two different entities. And that's, I think, as educators, what we would like to see. The state will have to put more resources toward that in terms of testing students, because to get that longitudinal data, we're going to have to test kids more often, but we're going to get better data from those tests, and we're going to be able to prescribe interventions better for those students moving forward if we know in the freshman year that they're struggling in mathematics, and we're going to be able to apply interventions to that student and assist them in being more successful. So, it's not a...certainly not a perfect model right now, and I think our teachers and administrators have done a really good job of navigating this in the district. I think the other thing, I mean, over Judy, when we were...Deb was showing the AP statistics. I think that goes back to, you know, that's another indicator of why our students holistically are doing better, because we have doubled at least the number of students and the number of tests that have been taken, going back to when Dave started here. That was one of his...Dave Clough, that was one of his primary goals when he came here. And so, whether kids get 3s, 4s, and 5s on the Advanced Placement test, which is great, even students that don't get 3s, 4s, and 5s, that may get 1s and 2s, are so enriched by the depth and rigor of that curriculum and being in that curriculum, which is obviously going to help when they take a PSAE test or they take an ACT test down the line. Deb, I think we would agree with that.
There are a few of us that are going to get so far ahead, and we've looked at the regional mass that's sitting here, not able to reach the bars as they wave to it, and we have nothing to utilize for me so far. In other words, we don't get to stay here, we don't get to go anywhere.
But we really don't get that much anyway.
But I can see it...I can see it coming. See something coming I'm just worried about. That's what I'm...why we're worried about. But I can just see something coming, and it just...
There is an effort to target schools that are very far behind. You're right. And, you know, but we're also being asked to assess students the last couple of years, our ELL, student...or English, English majors. I mean, they're being asked to take the same test, and in some cases, they can't even read English. So, as our demographics change, as those subgroups continue to grow, which they are growing, you know, we're still going to be held accountable for making sure those students succeed or grow, and it just depends on where you're getting at students at that particular time. So, I think it'll be difficult for all of us to meet those targets.
And our special needs students too.
Yeah.
Are expected to meet those things. Instead of going by their IAPs and putting a goal down that's really individual to them and marking them on that, they have to take the same test too. You can only have a certain percentage who does a different kind of testing. To me, that's not meaning individually to the child, that's meaning a state requirement.
I think we would all agree that the intent of NCLB, that every district has to actively work at ensuring that all of their students are learning, is a good thing. I think it's laudable, everyone would agree with that. The application of how we go about doing that, I think there's lots of room for debate on that, and you've raised some of those points, and we've talked about some of those points this evening. I think what we've reaffirmed within our district as we continue to move forward is our commitment to ensuring that all...regardless of NCLB, ensuring that all students have the opportunity to become more successful in the district, and that's what we're holding ourselves accountable for. You know, three years ago, when we did strategic planning the last time, the number-one thing that came up on the initial brainstorm about what we ought to be looking at was to ensure that all of our students were succeeding, not at state standards, but at our district standards, which are higher. And so, we've really spent a lot of time in our effort committed to that, as well as helping the rest of our students continue to be successful as well, and, you know, we've established a beachhead in that area, and we're going to continue down that path. So, it'll be interesting to see if healthcare comes off the table at some point, and you can actually start talking about education again, you know, how that's going to change, because right now, as it's currently configured to measure how kids are doing in Illinois versus kids in Florida, is ludicrous frankly, with the levels of standards that we have here versus some other states.
I heard you say start individuals, start freshmen, block student progress, so you're almost helping the IAP for every kid.
Mm-hmm.
For some kind of learning plan.
So, that data, you know, part of the infrastructure that we put in, and technology, and Deb and Mick and the Prizzles have been involved in those discussions, is to allow us to eventually get data sooner and get it down into teachers' hands in the classroom so they can make instructional decisions, you know, literally at the point that instruction is happening. And we're going to continue to move that direction regardless of NCLB, because we know it's best practice to help us be able to identify the interventions that students need to be more successful, and then we'll marshal our resources towards those areas. Things like the summer bridge program, for example, is an outcome of a lot of discussion that we had two, probably three years ago, leading up to the first program. But the more that we continue to look at data at the district level, and more importantly, at the building level, as Ellen and Marina are leading their teams in school improvement efforts, the better the students are going to be served in at the end of the day. And we, as we've said on opening day here, we have a collective will in this district. The community has been good to give us good resources to work with, and we're managing those well. And probably more importantly than those two things, we have the people here. We have the talent in this district on the instructional team and the administrative team to really make headway with our students that are not meeting standards at this point, and we see that as a really good challenge. We think, you know, that's a good place for us to be as we continue to work with all of our students, so I think we're real excited about that. And when we continue to assist those students in being more successful, then we're all more successful. Then the district continues to demonstrate results like Deb has shown to us this evening, when all of our kids are learning and they're achieving at higher levels. And you all feel free to add anything to that, if you'd like.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Larson. There is no president's report this evening, and we will then hear from our student forum reps, Elizabeth Oldenburg from Libertyville High School, which would like to report now.
Well, many LHS students are adjusting well and getting back into the school routine and things, but I think it'll take this full week, and then we'll all be back to normal. A lot of students are playing fall sports, and it's been great weather so far, so everyone's enjoying that. And musical tryouts for the play, which is Beauty and the Beast, start this Tuesday and Wednesday. Many seniors are organizing their college applications and doing last-minute school visits. And currently, there is a soccer game right now at LHS against Carmel, and I know a lot of students are going to cheer them on, and hopefully they can...for hopefully being a rival. Most LHS clubs start this week, and the freshman dance, which was last Friday, was very successful, and this is the first year they actually had moon bounces in the gym that students could like bounce in, and then they had Bago and the music and stuff. So, it was really a variety of things to do, which was really entertaining for the freshmen. And finally, our first ballcat football game is this Friday, and we are playing with Barrington. Barrington, so students are very excited and are planning on having a blackout, so they're going to wear all black clothes and body paint and all that stuff.
Can I be naive and ask what moon bouncing is, please?
Oh, like the moon. They're like the big castles that you blow up with air, and then people can bounce in them.
We used to call those the bouncy things, so...
They were there.
Thank you very much. Nancy Contheria from Vernon Hills High School.
Like the students at LHS, we're just getting back into the school routine. The stairways are a little crowded, the freshmen are kind of letting alternative routes to get to their classes, but that issue slipped over within a week or so. The sophomores and jobbers that actually took their permit test today, so if you were walking around the hallways, you could hear them screaming to their friends that they finally have their permits. The juniors are currently still enjoying their walk down from the junior lot while we have our nice weather, and all the seniors are pretty much just in fatuous mood or refund lunch release privileges right now. So, we've had fall sports going for about a week and a half. Boys and girls golf have both already had some tournaments and matches and brought home some victories. They were both invited today, so hopefully that went well. I was actually just coming from a girls' tennis match against Grace of North that we won tonight, so that's exciting. We have our first home football game coming up next week, so we should see a good turnout for that. One thing that everyone's really excited about this year is that the gym teachers have changed up our fitness testing a little bit. In the past, we had to do a 12-minute run, which was kind of the dreaded part of fitness testing, but they have replaced it with a five-minute cardio bike ride, and it's going over much better. Much better five minutes. Also, last year, I know a lot of the rising juniors were worried that we were losing our A-PUSH teacher, Mr. O'Brien, but they have been having a great time with the new teacher, Mr. Friedrich, so they really like him. He's a funny guy. We also have most of our clubs starting up this week. I know Senior Student Council is putting our annual supply drive into effect on Wednesday. That should go for a few weeks, so hopefully that will be successful. And we have yearbook pictures coming up tomorrow and Wednesday, so I'm sure some kids are at home picking up their outfits right now. But basically, we're just excited to be back into school and getting back into the team.
Thank you both. Doesn't take very long to be off and running. The superintendent's report. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Judy. We had some good news to share tonight, beginning of the school year. First, Community High School District 128 was recently named recipient of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, which is better known as the CHIOA. The district received this honor for its comprehensive annual financial report, which is referred to as CAFR. The certificate presented to Assistant Superintendent for Business Yasmin Thada is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So, Yasmin, Javol, thank you very much. So Yasmin, Jabal, thank you very much.
On Sunday, August 16th, student leaders from Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools participated in the annual North Suburban Conference Athletic Leadership Conference, held at Stevenson High School. The conference was attended by over 600 NSC student athletes and 130 coaches and athletic directors. Participating schools included Antioch, Grant, Lakes Community, Lake Forest, Lake Zurich, Libertyville, Mundeline, North Chicago, Stevenson, Vernon Hills, Warren, Macondah, and Zion Benson. During the day, the athletes are challenged to become the leaders in their schools by focusing on leadership skills and strategies. And if you ever get an opportunity to go to one of those, they're amazing. We do amazing work with our young people. So we're very pleased that our, all of our high schools are very involved in that program. And that concludes our good news tonight. You have one FOIA report in your folder as noted, and as always, we address those accordingly. The next two things on the agenda relate to someone that we know very well, and that's VHSHS Principal Ellen Swett. And I first want to recommend to the board that we vote on a recommendation that Ellen has met her performance goals. I will tell you, I've had the great pleasure to work with Ellen as the associate and last year as superintendent, and Dave before me, and Ellen is finishing a multi-year contract in which she has done a fabulous job. And part of that contract is that she has performance goals, and I can tell you unequivocally and without a doubt that Ellen has exceeded her performance goals. So I would ask that the board make a motion and approve that Ellen has met her performance goals from her expiring contract.
I make a motion that Ellen Swett, that we declare that Ellen Swett has met her performance goals for her outgoing contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Denise, please call the room.
Arthur.
Prove.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Well, now that we've certified that Ellen met her goals from her last contract, I think
Ellen would really like to have a contract moving forward. So that's probably our next order of business moving forward. And as the board knows and most of the public knows now, Ellen, after great consideration, has tendered her letter of resignation, which will actually be right at the start of the 2014-15 school year. And although we are going to be very sad to see Ellen depart, as we've talked, you know, five, five years and a few days is a long, is a long ways away. It's a different circumstance than it was in the, under the old retirement system where you did two years. So we have plenty of time to talk with Ellen before she leaves. But as the board will recall, we had some discussion in executive session at the last meeting regarding Ellen's continued employment in the district for the balance for service to us. And I would recommend at this point to the board and ask the board to approve Ellen's employment for early meeting calendar.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I approve that we approve employment of Ellen Swett to the Vernon Hills High School principal pursuant to the terms of our discussion the last meeting.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Discussion. Denise, please call the room.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
That concludes everything.
All right. Facilities and Finance Committee Chairperson Overrider.
Yes, we have a few items to take action on tonight on our agenda. The first one is consideration of adoption of the 2009-2010 budget. We have the certification of revenues, as well as the certifications. We talked about the budget for the last couple of months, had a public hearing two weeks ago, which there was a great deal of discussion with the board and the staff. Yasmin, would you like to add any comments?
Just a couple of items here and the discussions that we had at the board meeting, at the committee meeting, and at the public hearing. We already explored in one through the budget rather in great detail, there are a number of questions and questions. Hopefully, your answers were choosing to be provided to you. A couple of changes since you last saw the budget. I can't quite remember if you were waiting to approval from a disabled and non-resign student. Since I received approval of those, I included a new budget this way. So the budget that you see here is inside the manifesto. So there. Also Title I funds, which request the freshman of this year, is coming in accepting of education and budget. Once you approve the budget tonight, we examine positive state of information on education and that will make budgets.
And there's also a great deal of information on our webpage for the public as well.
So the information on the webpage with the 2009 and 2010 budget reflects the latest changes with those additional ARRA funds and the Title I funds and managing expenditures.
That's correct. That is supposed to be the budget format that you see tonight.
Any other discussion for the budget tonight? Make your motion then for approval of the 2009-2010 budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Denise, please call the room.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
We want to point out to the public again that we do the majority of our detail work in committees in this district, and we want to continue to invite the public into that conversation. You are welcome at any meeting. We would love to hear from you and engage you in the process of leading the district forward. So please feel free to join us at any of our meetings at either our P&amp;P or our Facilities and Finance meetings moving forward.
The next item is a bid recommendation for the transportation for special needs students. Yes, and I know we've got a number of people that responded to that. It's a recommendation from administration.
Yes, this is an annual bid that we seek to accommodate transportation to restaurants throughout places throughout this area. Generally, we have quite an interest in this process. We are, you know, fortunate that at least in this community, we have been able to manage our case with competitive bill. What she sees before you is the data that we receive. You analyze it and then compare the two finalists, as you see on the chart that you have there, and recommend that the first that you award is the one that we currently have, which is City Care Transportation.
So City Care had the lowest rates out of the seven. They quoted 20 of the lowest routes versus the next closest was Metro. The only question I had on the worksheet was, there were some questions that each of the companies had to answer, and one is, do you have a chairlift van? And C Care was one of the few that said no to that. Is that a particular concern for our students' needs?
If we do need one, that needs to have a chairlift on it. Generally, we go out and we can have our provider. There's more than you can work for us to do, and if C Care doesn't solve it, somebody else will. But we prefer that we go directly to other providers so that we can make sure that we have the trust, the education.
So that route's just carved out.
Yes.
Of all the routes, if there's that need. Correct. Any other questions on the special needs student transportation?
Is there a motion to accept City Care as the provider for transportation for our special needs students?
I make a motion that we accept City Care as the provider.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Denise, please call the room.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
And then the last item on the Facilities and Finance Committee agenda that needs action is the Vernon Hills High School 10-year life safety certification. And we reviewed that in committee. Jess, would you like to just share a little detail for the public about what that's about?
Yes. Every school in the state of Illinois must have a life safety survey done every 10 years. This year is Vernon Hills' 10th year, and the architect reviews the entire building and certifies that everything's within the code. He then makes a list of any provision that is not in compliance or feels it's not in compliance, and then we get a draft. Then we review that draft, and a lot of those items on that list, we will accomplish and take care of ourselves. As I said in the committee meeting, that how can a school 10 years old be not in compliance in all areas? But it is possible to move in on a Monday and on Tuesday and be not in compliance. Anytime you change any configuration of a room, that could throw it to out of compliance. You are measured, you, the school is measured on the code that was in bold at the time that you moved in. If room 101 changed two days later and a new code came in, then that room is measured on that code. Therefore, you could have violations. But we look forward to just waiting for the draft so that we can complete any items that we feel, and any that's significant, we have one year to complete.
And we had a fun schedule to cover in the sense that it would be required.
That is correct. Well, we have a lot to discuss.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the 10-year life safety survey certification?
So what?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Denise, please call the room.
Arthur.
Aye.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Ellie Pollie.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
There is no report from the Property Committee. Special Education District of Lake County, Delegate Munstead.
We'll be having our quarterly meeting Wednesday, September 2nd, and I will be attending the orientation. This is my first official SEDOL meeting, so looking forward to that. One of the major things that will happen at that meeting will be the adoption of the budget. So the SEDOL Foundation is having a 12th annual golf outing coming up on Monday, September 14th, and they'd like to make that opportunity available to anyone in the district at a reduced price. If anybody would like information on that, you can see me, I've got it. But I think it's probably just really very, um, let's see what else. I will also be expecting some updates on the construction projects at both the Laramont School and the Lake Forest campus as we modify. So I'll have much more.
Thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, just a reminder that Tri-Conference is in November, and if you plan to attend, make sure you get your paperwork in to Denise. And executive session, as I indicated, there is no need to have executive session, and under other business, we don't need to do it, we did that, yeah. So I think we're good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So what?
Second.
House in favor?
Aye.
Denise adjourned.